I want to see for a moment, I'm doing my list here.
Good evening.
Absen's zoom. It's just Keith and Brian, he says one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Fair.
Yeah.
Fair. I have a very gentle bone to pick with you.
Sorry?
I had a message from my ex-wife to say you're following her on Twitter.
Sorry, I'm following who? I cannot hear, I'm sorry.
No, I can't hear.
I think there is a problem with the audio in the room.
Yeah.
I think so.
Mike, could you want to just repeat what you said?
He's right, he's...
Wow. It has a problem with the mic?
Yeah, well, it's working, I asked.
Kitchen or not?
Yeah.
The problem is, it's giving a feedback, you know, it's like an echo. Yeah.
Is that on?
The trouble is, we can't go in either room. What if we can go in the office, something?
Yeah, it's just limiting this, people spreading between...
Three, four, five.
And I'm...
Can they get back to the audio coming out of the computer? So I can hear like a relay.
Yeah, can you hear me now? Yeah, fine. Fair can hear you.
Yep. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's...
I don't know, everyone can be stopped. Sorry, can you just...
Sorry, I unmuted myself.
Right, let me just let the other people in. They're all from Braddis Stade Radio, or some, Catherine is from Braddis Stade Radio.
Tom, please, come. Are you done? Can't find Braddis Stade again? Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, mate.
Okay?
Yeah, in front.
Well, I don't need too much time. Right, can you then to our... Right, let's start again. Good evening, everybody, welcome to the Braddis Stade Town Council, County Council meeting on Wednesday, 20th of December. Evaluation proceeding, people will know what to do if you're in your own house, if you're in somebody else's, they haven't passed the open for that. So we don't want them to do it here, if there's a long term. Filming in Gordon, I guess you were filming, um, that?
Yeah.
Um, and that leads us straight into submissions from the public. Um, is there anybody from the public that wants to say something which is not actually on the agenda? Okay, I will bring up one thing, because I have had an email from Sarah Messenger, um, in reference to, um, she was not very pleased at the, um, what was there on, the Oilla Book Centre for Remembrance Day. I haven't had a chance to speak to her, but really it takes over our control. It's managed by, um, the management company there, and they particularly position not a special event because of the Covid restrictions. Um, the second point she made was in reference to a gate, which I believe is at the Sports Centre, which is again acts over our limit. We don't own the Sports Centre, and I don't know what can or can't be done. Um, and I have sent her an email to ask her to give me a call. However, um, that hasn't happened, um, so therefore I can't really pin down anything more than what was more than that was what we've got. Um, so that's all I had from submissions from the public.
Sharon?
Yes.
Okay, and I just want to point out that, you know, the last Leshawar Youth Meeting, I pointed out the next Committee and Ginnor Forum meeting on the 10th, because I was perceived that, but our meeting is on the 17th of March. But right now, because of the Awful Council meeting is on the 10th of March, we actually moved it forward, and it will be on the 9th of March, so you can mark it. The 9th of March, Tuesday, you have the Committee and Ginnor Forum meeting, so everyone is welcome to attend.
Is it, are we set in the talk, Tom?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right. Okay, lovely. Thank you, Tom. Um, right, uh, apologies for absence.
No.
We have no apologies, apart from possibly Elaine, which will come on in a second. Um, applications for dispensation by council, there's plenty of dispensations. Uh, declarations by members of the room. I think we've got anyone who... So the next brings me on to announcements from the chair. Um, now, the only announcement which I have, which is in front of me, is, um, I've been asked to read this out from Elaine Hardwick. And it starts, "I'd like to thank the residents for their support in voting for me in the last three local elections, giving 10 years being your voice. Sharon and the office staff, thank you for your hard work, and you will be missed. And we'd like to thank Sarah Messenger and her gang for taking up the big project Braddis Stade in the room, which I managed to persuade by talking a little rubbish. Must have convinced her to shut me up, it did take me three attempts. When I was mayor of Braddis Stade, one of my main achievements was to bushes, I've improved the tennis courts in Brookway into a trailer car parking. It took a while to get off the ground, but we got there in the end. I would like to thank them for your support over the years, and Fat, the newcomer. I enjoyed mentoring you on the ways of the council meetings. Andy and Jenny...
I'm enjoying his life.
Andy and Jenny for sticking by me and good friends.
Blanking, blanking, bro.
We moved to rural area in another county. Therefore, I am no longer able to represent the residents in Braddis Stade. Therefore, as of today, the 20th of January, 2021, I have resigned from council. Um, all I'd like to just add to that is, um, whatever political views one has, um, she did serve on the council for 10 years, and I think, um, we should just recall a vote of thanks for her, um... So that's that. So I don't have any other announcements at all from the chair, um, since the last meeting. So we move on to the from the minutes of the meeting held on 8th of November 2020.
What about...
From...
How...
How a chair... Yes, yes, Tom.
Okay, uh, the, on the, on the last minute, 7.6, the proposed amendment to standing order 42. So that was, uh, 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 was originally proposed by John Ash, I seconded it, so, uh, if you want to make it accurate. Sharon, just for your information, following discussion?
Oh, John proposed it and you seconded it?
Yeah, that's what, but in the minutes it came up, I proposed and John seconded it, so...
So I think we change that, the amendment?
Yes, I'm happy to do that, yeah, I'm happy to.
Amendment, I think Bobby's proposing, um...
Yeah, okay, that's...
Tom seconded it in the minute, so all those who were present, even to be correct, I thought it was same as that, they're assent.
Thank you.
Terry, Frank, I'm there. So that's...
Yeah.
So that is...
Sharon, you're really gone.
Hang on a minute. Goodness, eh? Right, we're back. Um, so is it, is... Can we have extensions, please, then?
Yeah, it's engines. Well...
Well, I think Tom seconded it, so...
Yeah, yeah, I seconded it, that's all, I'm sorry.
A little bit, I'm up, Tom.
No, that is actually for that.
Enough tension.
Yeah, I think, Brian, did you understand?
Yes, basically, I didn't put my hand up. Uh, um, I was looking at the computer and I didn't put my hand up. So if you want to put me in a disagreement with that, that's fine.
Okay, so, um, the only other one I didn't see, uh, was John Ash? Was it Tom?
Is it Tom?
He seems to have disappeared.
That's because Zoom is really good. It's a problem that the computers may be so. Unless my phone is Zoom, it's much worse, really, really bad sometimes, but I do manage with it. But Teams, I reckon is great, and it's very near away with, all you reckon is that Teams is terrible. Zoom brilliant, but he's not here now, so perhaps he's got it bad as well.
My number's for everybody who was... Who voted, but yeah, as I say, I don't know where John's gone. I'm just gonna walk down here.
Yeah.
I'm gonna just change that on from seven points.
Didn't you mean there was none again?
I changed that then, and I'm there. Sign every page, and then sign the last page, and then also just initial those two, that'd be lovely, thank you.
Put it all. Um, can we deal with... Matthew, this is the name, all the way to page eight, with your name, according to the table.
Is it just me, or is everybody struggling here, Tony? I can hear him.
Hang on a minute, let me just see what... No, it's on that one, yeah.
What about the new mic we bought?
Yeah, that's, that is...
What's causing the problem?
What's causing the problem, I think.
That's it.
Which is the new mic?
But can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, we can hear you.
People are just gonna have to shout, or speak up a bit, I think.
It was a good buy then, because it worked well before, we could hear you before.
Well, it is, it is still working, according to the, the, my, um, like, system, it says that it's working, because it's linked to the webcam, so it's, there's a microphone in the webcam, and also that microphone as well. I think, but... Three lights are on, so yeah, it is working. What else?
Otherwise, Tony can come a bit forward, so that if...
Oh, my, what are you saying, Tony, and this?
Yeah, we're gonna keep that chair and we'll just stay in forward, so...
No, just stay, no.
No, just take, just take, there's loads of cable.
Is there?
Yes, just to pick it up.
Sharon, sir.
That's weird, how you're doing that?
Is that any better?
Yeah, better.
Any better, one, two, three, four?
Yeah, much better.
You know, much better. That is really good, that is, that's fabulous. It's not because, well, there's a lot of people on there not wearing masks, I'm not quite sure what it is.
It's because we are two metres distance.
Yeah, I was a bit worried, you know, uh, because...
I got my three metre out earlier, and we're...
Yeah, you look protect me, you know, so...
You're wearing one.
I don't wear it all much, you know.
It's not a lot, but you can...
No, it's not the amazing, though, it looks strange.
Oh, there it is. More. On page 41.
There you don't, oh, there it is, it's back. No, he's, he's in the waiting room at the top, and I have admitted him, so it says he's joining, so he's obviously having tech problems at home.
Oh, it's Tom, wasn't it? Oh, yeah, it's John, wasn't it?
Yeah, the last one.
Come on, Sharon.
On the last one.
There are a lot of pages.
Fifty, fifty-one pages, I think, is the record.
No, I think the record was about seven pages.
Okay.
But fifty-one is pretty close, yeah.
There you go. Thank you, Sharon.
Thanks very much.
Right, proceeding to item 7, 7.1. Um, recommendations from 2008 Braddis Stade Town Council Strategic Planning Meeting, 7.11 Next Stage Skate Park Development, including equipping interior of containers, completion of landscaping, project tools and equipment.
Um, no update at the moment.
Okay. Um, 7.2 Recommendations from the Strategic Planning Meeting, reference Patiscore Activity Centre, replace damaged grass, oblique ground, increase school play area, without additional grass to allow outdoor play area all year round. I think you, you sent something out that you had dealt...
Yeah, we've done a thing on that.
With references that, um, we, we haven't managed to do that just yet, and it, we've got no complaints, yeah. Right, uh, next one is, uh, 7.22 Patiscore Activity Centre Play Area, design and install new play area to replace existing. Um, grant application was submitted, requesting 50,000 trustees have looked into application, blah, 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 blah. Um, so we're waiting for a decision on that. Okay, hopefully by the end of January, or 19th of January, it was yesterday.
That was yesterday, yeah, the trustees' meeting was yesterday, I think.
Have, have we had an answer from that?
I don't know, hopefully, yes, you haven't heard anything yet from them? No.
Oh, okay. Um, hopefully, global response, hopefully. Um, 7.3 Recommendations from the Strategic Planning Meeting, uh, redevelopment of the Brookway Activity Centre Main Building. Um, the main building, no meetings have taken place as further, so that's, that's ongoing. Okay. So, um, 7.4, um, 21, 22 Braddis Stade Radio Lease Review. I think we've got that in our agenda pack.
Will you pass there our representatives from Braddis Stade Radio in the meeting?
Um, there was a modern question I had on the accounts. Oh, here we go. Um, yeah, on the, uh, last page, the Braddis Stade Radio Limited, uh, detailed profit and loss account items for the year ended 30th of November 2019. Um, it says exceptional loss on the disposal of investments, 6,527 pounds. Can you just explain what that is?
Um, yeah, 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 sorry, I'm here, I'm just getting my copy of our accounts out, because obviously this is just, you know, you just asked me that question.
Exceptional loss on the disposal, disposal of investments?
Yeah, so...
Thanks, I'm just inquisitive what that was.
Um, so...
Uh, Paul, quite a big proportion of your income?
Yeah, so some of that is, um, natural losses as equipment becomes obsolete and has to be replaced, so it's a depreciation of the value of some of our equipment over time.
Okay.
It increased from last year.
Yeah.
From 200...
409 pounds, yeah.
There was some...
Depreciation isn't an exceptional loss, is it? That's just a, a natural...
Yeah, some years there isn't a, you know, a depreciation and things needed replacing, and other years there's substantial...
So what, so why do things need replacing to create that figure?
Um, well, there's quite a lot of equipment that needed, um, replacing and updating, so we're, um, talking about the servers needing some replacement, and other computer things that, that go on in that box. Um, the transmitter is, was at the end of its life, so that's been something that's needed to be replaced. Um, yeah, there are various things, obviously they're not listed individually, so that's quite a difficult question to answer, um, go back, you know, a year. Um, but yeah, there, there are, there are losses of equipment over time.
Yeah. I think we, uh, we already sanctioned the 4,000 pound grant rate at the...
Yeah.
Measure used to make it, didn't it?
Yeah, it's not the, so if you remember, in the, uh, in the Votor Council meeting, you, um, deferred a decision on how much the radio 21, 22 and lease would be, um, until after the... I'm not sure if everyone's got the same thing, but I can't hear. I could block them, girl.
Yeah, it disappeared. Darwin, you can't hear you again.
Just, just don't, don't...
You should be all right now, yeah.
You were in up there.
Yeah, it's...
There you go, do you speak up there?
And that's me at the webcam, so honestly, that is...
I've just moved the microphone, so hopefully it's more central, so we, we, hopefully, everyone will be able to pick up if they speak up.
Yeah, be ready.
Can you hear us now?
Sharon, it just went, it went from nothing, it went from totally clear to nothing, so it was like a fault, as opposed to not, just not being in the right position.
It was just dropping out.
Yeah, the microphone keeps dropping out.
Yeah.
But it's linked, video cam, the webcam as well, so I think we might need to get a new webcam, because we've had that one a few years now. Can I just ask, we, we haven't agreed the 4,000 pound yet, have we?
We did it, too.
Yeah, that was agreed in, um...
Yeah.
Let's do it. This is just looking at the rent for how much rate the Braddis Stade Radio lease charge is going to be from first of April onwards, that's what you're looking at.
Going to be the same as last year?
How much was it last year?
So 800...
Eight hundred and fifty pounds. Um, the rate goes up to the other 25, 30, I heard from the report, so...
It is in the report here, um...
Yeah.
It currently is 850 pounds, and can it be the same as this, as the next year?
It said it was agreed as a fair uplet, so who, who agree there, that one?
Yeah, that was, that was last year, that was 2021.
Yeah. All right, we're getting...
Now we're looking to 21, 22, yeah.
Yeah, well, I would suggest, uh, the same as last year, a freeze on that, an increase.
Would you be happy with that, Catherine?
Yeah, yeah, of course, that would be, um, more generous of you, yeah, we, we'd like it to be frozen, just because although, you know, we have exclusive use in all our equipment in those rooms, we obviously can't open to the community, and it is a difficult year, has been, and probably will be this coming year, so, um, we'd really appreciate it if you, if we can keep the rent at 850.
So I think that was Roger proposed it, and Michael seconded that, I think.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, John, John is saying that the meeting is totally disjointed with audio and visual problems. How can we discuss budgets like this?
Well, we're just, see how we get on, I guess.
Is it any better now, John, now that we've just had a reading of the room?
Well, the trouble is the audio keeps going on and up, the video keeps freezing, and you can only hear like two thirds of the sentence. Now, if I'm the only one who's suffering from that, then fair enough, I'll put up with it, but I would think a lot of people have got the same problem, because my internet signal, my wifi is showing full strength, so are other people suffering like this?
John, John, is it this room that keeps on freezing, so you get video issues from this room?
Yeah, I think it probably is, so I think it's linked to the video camera.
Could I suggest, could I suggest that we put off our video then? That will not affect it, that it will bring my...
What I'm saying is, is I'm sat here with a laptop on, that's just showing videos. If I turn this one off, it gives, um, it gives Sharon more bandwidth for the meeting. So there's no need for me to do this, so I've turned that off. And the, the main issue we've got with the microphone is unfortunately, for some unknown reason, it keeps disconnecting from Sharon's laptop. So it's not really where it is or how loud we're speaking, it's unfortunately, we keep losing the connection through whatever reason, through the webcam.
Well, I can't see how we can discuss important items, if we're only hearing two, three thirds of the story. To be fair, to be fair to Zoom, though, we had a South Coast Council meeting using, um, Microsoft Team, and that was as crap as this was. And we were talking about millions of budgets, and you just couldn't hear half a time, and I, and I wasn't the only one to complain, either.
Do we just...
I'm not, I don't know what the answer is, Mike, to be fair, but this is ridiculous, we didn't catch them.
So I turned mine off as well?
Turned off, sorry.
Uh, John, hopefully if I turn mine off as well, um, that we all know, uh, hopefully...
Why don't we all turn our radios off?
We haven't.
No, it's something, yeah.
We, but we, we turned all our own personal laptops off, so that hopefully we've got a better signal going out to you.
Yeah, okay, I understand.
All right, so, um, okay, let's progress with the meeting, so hopefully... All right, so, um, okay, let's progress with the meeting, so hopefully John, you won't suffer too much. So, right, so.
So Roger proposed and Michael seconded on the eight hundred and fifty pounds for the radio.
For the same lease as last year.
Yeah.
So those in favour?
Keith?
Keith, are you in favour?
No, I didn't hear what was said, so, uh, I mean, might, if you say it again, I might agree with you.
Your name's Brian, it's your name and your key.
I'm listening, I got news out of that.
Asking about, yeah, Keith, so it was to agree the, the Bradley Stoke Radio Lease Budget of eight hundred and fifty pounds, so freezing the charge for the forthcoming year.
Okay, yeah, I sort of thought we were still talking about John and team, so, uh, yeah, I agree with that, thank you very much. I tell you what, we ought to really say thank you, because they have had a really bad year, but he's still kept broadcasting, and, um, you know, they've got some really good programs on, they've done a good job, it's been very difficult for them.
Okay, so let's move on to the next item.
Uh, so we've already brought that in, haven't we?
No, 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 we, we take on board, and that's why we've frozen the, uh, the, the lease.
Oh, yeah, because you appreciate it, and that's why we've done it, I'm just saying, I think we could appreciate, you know, just say, thank you very much for continuing all this really hard time, that's what I was saying, but if you want to cut me off on that, that's fine.
No, no, Paul, Brian, you've said it. I don't need to repeat it.
I'd like everybody else to say it, that's all.
Right, all together, huh?
Brilliant.
Um, the next one is to adopt the Bradley Stoke Town Council Volunteer Policy. Um. I, you, hopefully you've read this from your agenda pack. My question, my. Um. Um, basically, where did this come from?
Uh, so this is a combination of the SLCC, their draft.
What's SLCC?
Deciding over the council park.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Probably, I don't know. And.
Um, and, um, it's similar to other, um, parish, uh, town councils who have volunteer policies in place, because a lot of them use the, the ten plate one.
Um, my next question is, for the, um, DBS checks, um, who is for that? Because usually there's a charge for that.
Um, yeah, we would pay for that through the, um.
No.
It was me, you, yeah?
If, if it's a volunteer, South Gloss is the umbrella body, we'll do it for free.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
How many volunteers we have?
Can we, can we actually make that into the policy, that it's South Gloss that pays it?
Yeah, we passed it.
Chair.
We can do that, but South Gloss may change the policy, we have no control over it.
Chair.
And, and that's a valid question, I mean, who's gonna pay for it?
Yeah.
Chair.
Yes.
Are, are those DBS checks done through Integra?
Has, I don't know, has been explained. Or yeah, paying for in this draft volunteer.
Are the DBS is done through Integra, through South Gloss or not?
Not, I'm aware, we just go through South Gloss using their, they give an online link to the individual, we then do an ID check, and then it comes out back out to the individual.
Is that, is it, is that as if they've got their own DBS online already because they have one? Or are we having?
Uh, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a new check, we're talking about, new, new checks.
I, normally, I, I would check it with Integra, because there is new policy on that.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my question is, how many volunteers we have? And because right now, um, Sharon mentioned that it's because of the S P C template that we put up this one. This one to know how many volunteers we have and to see whether we are passing it, they need for it, and to, and to actually look into these kind of things, the charges and other things, because that's most, how many volunteers we have, that's.
Um. Jason, he's got a few volunteer, um, litter pickers. I mean, obviously they wouldn't need the DBS checks done, that's only if you're working directly with children, young people and vulnerable adults. So litter picking around the street, you wouldn't need how a DBS checked on, so there would obviously be no cost involved to that, and we supply the litter pickers and the bags for that work.
What, what if they were in and around a school?
Wouldn't be in a school, because that's probably.
Well, around, around the school.
Yeah, we wouldn't, because our little sisters, unless they directly work with children and young people, they don't have DBS checks done as a matter of course, so.
Can I raise a point?
Yes, of course, Tony.
Um, other expenses, it says, um, the council believes the volunteer should not in any respect suffer financial by volunteering. Um, out-of-pocket expenses must be claimed to be in three months and receipts produced where possible. I think we should remove where possible and say that it's, um, you know. Non-dairy, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, just take out the word possible.
Yeah, just put, um, must be produced and receipts must be produced.
Yeah.
You know, because either they put a, a receipt in or they don't get the money, so it makes people, you know, very, very, um, you know, um, determined to, to make sure their records are correct.
And what, what is the out-of-pocket expenses likely to be?
How many?
Mike, is that like a little for cars?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's open-ended.
Yeah, for volunteer litter picker.
I do some litter picking, I never claim any mileage.
I'm going to stop.
I mean, volunteering is volunteering, isn't it? I mean, if you're gonna buy a, you know, a sort of a high-gзд jacket or something like that, that's a different thing, but, you know, where does, where does volunteering stop and employment even, like, even, um, on a, on an official basis start? Well, I think, I think that's a good point, Tony, I think we should know precisely what volunteers could um, be likely to claim that would be, you know, that would be, um, accepted, and if they do, you know, once we've decided, once we've confirmed that, if they do, um, claim anything, then they have to produce a receipt to prove it.
Yeah, and at this moment in time, uh, the only aspect I can see what has come forward tonight, what the volunteers are gonna do, is litter picking. So why do we need a policy just for litter picking? I mean, if you can't come up with any other, other reasons, what the volunteers are gonna do apart from litter picking?
I think.
I could give you some valid reasons, for example, people who are volunteering with, uh, youth work on a regular basis, um, and in terms of Terry's point, uh, all we were doing was following good practice guidance, that anyone who volunteers and gives their time for free, it shouldn't be to their detriment. So, for example, if someone's volunteering with us all day, uh, they could buy himself a meal deal from Tesco or something like that. Um, and it shouldn't be a cost to them because they're giving their services for free, that's just.
It's not free, though.
That's just the basic principle of volunteering, is it shouldn't cost the volunteer. Um.
But Graham, it's not free, if they're, if they're charging the council irrespective, you know, you could then open that up to coffee and all the rest of it, couldn't you, you know, I mean, I've never been to a situation where I volunteered and, um, expected to claim expenses, you know, volunteering is exactly that, it's volunteering, and so if they can't, if they're not prepared to do it for free, it doesn't change as a volunteer, in my view.
Thank you, Terry, uh, Mike would like to say a point, you've got his hand up, yeah, I got, and I'll speak to him in a minute, Andy, I think.
Just one thing, one of the, um, authorities I used to serve on worked on the, on the question of fuel expenses and what have you, said they wouldn't pay it unless you went outside the district area, so on the basis that if you're working the volunteering in your immediate vicinity, it's part of the general good.
Yeah, I'll come, I'll come to it now, Ed, what would you like to say, Ed?
Oh, thank you, uh, thanks for making the points, everyone else, that's very good. Uh, I'd like to refer you to eight point one, um, where it says engaged in any work on our behalf. I think we should insert a word there that says plan. It's not that someone goes off and thinks, oh, I'll do this kind of volunteering, and then you end up with, well, that wasn't what we intended.
Yeah, that's a good point, and maybe agreed with the council or something like that as well.
Uh, that can be.
Agreed with the council. Or it's, uh, point one, whilst they are on premises or engaged. What was, sorry, what was the wording?
Authorized work.
I mean, you authorize work on our behalf.
And, and, and the next question would be then, who's gonna authorize it?
At least you can do something on its own, you know.
Yeah, well, it, it, it all ended this, at this moment in time, you could just run up a bill for nothing. Next, um, uh, Brian has got his hand up.
Yeah, I think, I think it's got quite a good idea, the policy. Um, I, I must admit, um, we have got quite a lot of volunteers over at Charon Hays, um, which actually do litter picking, um, but what we've done is we've provided them with, um, basically, we've provided them with gloves, um, which they should use, and we also provide them with, um, litter picker sticks, and which they give back at the end of the, uh, term, we've, in fact, copious amounts of gloves considering what was happening. Uh, we, we provide them with bags and some instructions on how to use the bags, because the thing is, when you actually take your stuff to the dump, um, it's got to be separated into the different bits, so you have one volunteer collecting tin cans for, for instance, and somebody maybe collecting things which have just got to be disposed of, uh, in the disposal thing where it's just, you know, just gone, it's not actually, um, re, re, renewable or whatever, um, but you also have the situation where, um, we felt there that people needed to, when, when actually litter picking, quite often they'll go into the road or a gutter or something that picks on the up, and so we want to make sure they're visible, um, so we provide yellow jackets so that they're safe. And I think in reality, this draft volunteers' policy needs to be re-looked at by our safety person, um, you know, in, in the council, um, because we, we need, we need to get this right. If a bit of a policy has got to be done, but even if you've got volunteers, you need to have some kind of, uh, control there, otherwise you could actually have quite a lot of liability, it's all the same, you're insured, uh, but the reality is a little bit concerned that nothing in there whatsoever is there for the safety of the people volunteering.
Well, sir, we can just move on because this is, um, we've got Ben here who wants to say something, I'll come back in a minute, Ed.
This is, I, I agree with what they're saying, but I think it's kind of the definition of like what's, what, who, what is reasonable, and who defines the reasonable out-of-pocket expense.
Exactly.
Um, because as much as I can appreciate, we could be talking about somebody going buying themselves a sandwich, et cetera, that becomes catering, we don't have a catering budget, and I think we should plan for those things, we don't need an out-of-pocket, out-of-pocket expense volunteer policy or something like that. Um, but I just kind of want a bit more understanding of who defines reasonable, and assuming town clerk, if it's town clerk, define what's reasonable and then something we pay. Um, the, the general principle of some kind of out-of-pocket expense for somebody who's genuinely trying to help us and help the community with their free time, I think is perfectly acceptable, government departments have volunteering policies where they have civil servants to take, um, pay and unpaid leave as, um, as, uh, volunteers in their communities, so I don't think it's anything out of the ordinary. And I just think it needs a bit more, um, structure around this, uh, policy.
Um, Roger would like to say something?
Yeah, um, on expenses again, it says, uh, the volunteer should, uh, seek permission from the town clerk, the deputy town clerk, or the youth development and participation worker. What about the finance manager, who has to pay for it all?
What about the council?
What about the finance manager, surely you get approval from the finance manager to spend any of that expenses?
But you have to say, it's a part that all, like, all, all, that you have to, um, be, like, the famous, what, that's because, okay, that they tend to be really, really low level.
Yeah, I know, but.
Yeah, yeah, they could be low level, Rachel, but at this moment in time, this document is totally open-ended, it could be five pounds, five thousand pounds, there's no limit on any of this, and to be quite frank, I think at this moment in time, we ought to shelve this.
Yeah, I agree, because otherwise I'd send the whole meeting talking about this.
There's nothing that's come up at this moment in time, I can see that we need volunteers for, unless somebody else can come up with a valid reason why we want to volunteer. I mean, we are all volunteers as councillors, we don't get paid, and we put in hours and hours and hours, we don't get a free meal down at Tesco. Um, sorry, Andy would like to say something.
Yeah, several times a year, we do actually involve quite a lot of volunteers, i.e. the festival and the fireworks, so we have quite significant amount of volunteers, but generally you find that, uh, most people do have a policy for expenses, but it's incredibly rare that people do actually claim anything back.
Yeah, I think so too. There shouldn't ever be a need really, should there? But I, I do think, Tony, I just think we should move to take this offline and, and review it in some other appropriate way rather than continue talking about it today, because I think we might be in danger of throwing out our meeting.
Oh, yeah.
So I made a question, that maybe we invite the volunteer centre to comment on the policy.
Quite an idea, actually, yeah.
I think it is once the councillors have agreed what they think it should say.
And the, the answer to that is no, Graham. You know, I think we should make our own ones up, not somebody else.
Yeah, you might just say, the way, the way that it works in South Gloucestershire is basically that, um, South Gloucestershire, uh, are actually contacted, they're quite happy to provide volunteers with all the kit themselves, not a problem, uh, and even sometimes will provide a skip, um, which they'll take or just collect the bags, uh, themselves, so. But the reality is, if you're gonna title this Bradley Stoke Town Council, you know, you're, you're actually starting to have major problems with insurance and everything else, because the volunteers, the real volunteers, will go out and do it, yes, they'll be supplied by, with equipment, but the reality of the matter is, they get a bit of guidance, but it's then nothing to do with us, you know, if you want to volunteer in the area, do stuff, otherwise you can have a major wrath, the problems with insurance and all sorts of things.
I think, I think we do that.
Sorry, Sharon, Brian, uh, we've done several litter picks here, where we've had ivies, we've had the gloves, we've had the litter pickers, and we had sacks, and we've had the local authority to take it away, so we've done that quite a few times here locally, so we, we know the score, and nobody got paid.
Um. And also, I, we just, we just kind of sort of agreed that we're gonna take this offline now.
Yes, but, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, I think they'll take that as a proposal for me, Terry, it, it'll take this off and then review it in maybe six months.
Yeah.
Um, if you, if you, would you like to propose that, Terry?
Yes, I would, yeah.
Would we, uh, trust to look into it and come back in March?
I think the proposal was, we shelve this for six months.
I'm not, I'm not mad about the time, I don't, I don't mind whatever anybody suggests a different time, but I just think, speaking about, we're not getting anywhere with it tonight, um, I just think.
Volunteering is volunteering, and we don't get paid. That's whole point of what people put their hands up to volunteer for the community, that's why we do it.
The worry, chairman, is that if someone goes volunteering, falls down a rabbit hole and breaks a leg, will, will the council be responsible?
We're still talking about it, we're still, we've just agreed that we're gonna take it offline, and we're still talking about it, so.
Right, right, let's shelve it, shelve the project, okay, we'll move on. Okay, we don't need us a time as well, we don't need.
We need to decide what I think, we need to decide now.
So take offline and review again in six months' time.
We don't review it, we don't review it, we don't review it.
Well, but that's not my proposal, but, Tony, I, I just, I think because of the strength of feeling, I think it might be the right thing to do to have a review, even if it. the right thing to do to have a review, even if it gets shelved hopefully. I don't know what other people think, but you know, or, but. I wasn't just shelving it altogether.
We didn't allow a proposal to be shelved.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, my proposal wasn't to take it offline and shelve it. My proposal was to take it offline and consider another way of reviewing it so that we could all agree what's the best way of taking it forward.
I think the suggestion which was made to go to the volunteer lady and ask her opinion on it and what we should be doing is by far the best one, to be quite frank, and just shelve it completely until you get an answer back and then possibly have led your youth communities have a look at it. I think that's your best bet on this one. Because otherwise you're in a nightmare situation.
Let's stop listening on it. Yeah, go on, last one then from Keith.
Sure. We're in danger of carrying on discussing it. I think, as Terry said, we should perhaps review it and I would support that. I would also support that we do, like Brian has said, go to the volunteer unit who are more geared up for taking on volunteers. Let's be honest. Volunteers, they don't come forward dragging their feet and kicking their heels. They're offering their time. Now, if they do that and they're prepared to give up their time for free and they don't want to even have a tea break or a lunch break or anything like that out of it. You know, we have to abide by health and safety. We would have to have some form of protection for insurance, which, you know, we'd have to check with our council insurance if they're engaging in anything that we're asking them to do. But I think really, you know, let's take some overall guidance from the volunteer unit. Because they deal with this every day of the week, in all sorts of volunteering aspects. So let's just review it, look at it in six months' time if you like. But, you know, in the meantime, perhaps Sharon can do some work behind the scenes and get some feedback, or you, Brian, somebody. And just, you know, present something in the future with, you know, guidelines.
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
We move on now.
Is that your proposal then, Keith?
Yeah.
I proposed that.
Or Terry proposed it. You seconded it. One, two, three.
Three, four. Terry, five. Brian, six. Don Ash, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
Okay, unanimous.
And then against?
Yeah.
Abstentions?
It's one for not just firm, five is abstinent.
And Ed seems to have disappeared.
Okay, right, let's move on, goodness. So the update on the Bradley Stone Skirco Trail. Del. First of all, I'd like to thank Del for all the hard work in this particular one. It is predominantly.
Amazing job.
Be done, be done all on our fractures predominantly. So, would you like to say something, Del? Well, you pass it. Yeah, unmute yourself.
No, it would be fun to do. We might have to do it going next year, but maybe when it's not so wet.
Yeah, okay. I have got the certificate for the spectators. So that we can give that out. And the, I don't know if we've had any funds in from Andy Ward?
Not Andy Ward, Andy.
Andy Witt. Sorry, Andy.
Yeah, I do get expenses, don't I?
Yeah. So if we can perhaps just flog him an email, just say any chance of user bank details or something?
I think, Rachel, have the whatever expense paid now. I think, oh yeah. All right, we can chase that one up and say, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, could you say you had a certificate?
Yeah, sadly, I put it to one side. I forgot to bring it. I've got it at home in an envelope, a certificate for a hundred pounds worth of.
Oh, the price. Oh, right, yeah.
The price, yeah, for respect service. And did the, uh, the pub pay? Yes, okay, we've got a nod from Del. Okay, lovely. Let's move on. To receive the minutes of the financial meeting on the sixteenth of December and to deal with any matters referred to the council, not covered elsewhere on the agenda. First one is to deal with the financial regulations with wordings amended to the financial regulation eleven point three and additional point eleven point ten.
I said eleven point ten, but apologies, it should be eleven point six.
Yeah, so you have that in your agenda back.
The other thing which we are aware of, which we all need to be addressed, is the reference to the EU.
You've gone again, Sharon. Sharon, we can't hear you.
Yes, he's not speaking, that's why.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we are just wait, we are seeking guidance of the wording relating to the European procurement directive from Alfa and now. And we know that there's a finder tender website which we also will need to use to utilise high value high value tenders. So we will, we are aware of that, but there will be a further change in financial regulations in due course.
Yeah. My only point of these changes is item E. Where it says, if less than three quotes are received for contracts above ten thousand, or if all tenders are identical, the council may make arrangements as it feels fit to procure the goods. Now, that just goes away from having three quotes. We only have three quotes and we don't have three quotes. I personally feel we should have three quotes. And if you haven't got, you've only got two, you need to go and get another one. Because that just opens the floodgates.
I agree with you, I mean, because there's no, there's no driver then to get three quotes, is there?
They could. We just get two for everything, which is over ten thousand, which is not as small a amount.
But that would be a breach of the policy anyway, because that's a catch clause if you've not.
You can't get just three quotes.
Yeah, but that shouldn't be in there then at all. You should get three quotes, period.
But if they've gone, so what happens if they end up with a situation where no one's, where no one, where people refuse to quote?
You've got to go find another company to quote. There's thousands of companies out there that would die to use facilities.
But we have had specialist companies in the past where it's a very small niche market, where we've not been able to get three quotes.
I guarantee you, there's more than three companies anywhere on any particular thing, fairness voluntary, that you can get a quote from. One issue I had when I first came as a councillor is that, for example, and I'll give you the example, is the festival organiser. And I said, you keep using the same people year in, year out, which is like giving them an open chequebook. And I said, you really have to go out to tender because by doing that, you, the guy may be the best quote for a slice of bread, but you don't know whether or not his figures are competitive to somebody else. So what happened? They went out to three quotes. One of the quotes was from a guy in City Road, a flat in City Road. I'm sorry, this is just not good enough. So why I am so particular about we should go out and get three quotes? We should get three proper quotes. And there's not a specialist company in this country that has only two contractors that will quote. I'm sorry, we have to do due diligence for the money that we are spending for constituents. And that's my, that's my point. And anybody would like to comment any articles?
Go hand up, Chair. Rachel?
Yeah, Rachel, what would you like to say?
This is just standard wording and it doesn't really take away beneath the three quotes or tenders. That is in the earlier stages. If it got to the stage that someone didn't quote for whatever reason, then it would go back to council and council would merely say, right, we need more quotes then. And it would just stop it. Or they'd make the decision the other way. It would be completely in council's power to insist on another quote. And in most instances, you know, we do try to get three very, very good quotes each time. But sometimes things do happen where supplier might, you know, something happens and at the last minute he comes after that quote. So we then haven't got time to, for what that's needed, to go and get some alternative quotes. So it makes more sense for it to come back to council and for council to look at that and make a decision, which might very well be, no, we want more quotes.
I'm sorry, I first feel we need three quotes, period. But anyway, that's my personal feelings, Rachel. Anyway, I'll come back to you in a second, Brian. Ben, Adam, Andy, Neil first.
The point I had about E is I do not, I do not disagree with you at all, Tony, on the idea to go and get three quotes. And I stand by that very strongly, that we should be going to get quotes then. The only thing I'd say is in terms of how this regulation is working, standing orders, that E statement is giving you the possibility that council could choose to authorise something if it wanted to. If we remove that E statement out, we don't get as an opportunity as a council to then go and authorise something. Because we're then acting outside of our financial regulations. If, if county officers went away and didn't quote the three quotes, they're breaking the regulation. If we got less than two quotes and didn't come back to us, as that says, it's the council to make the decision about the arrangements it wishes to take. If they didn't do any of that, our officers would be acting in breach of our regulations. So that gives us, that gives, that gives council, full council, the ability to look at the situation on merit at the time and then make a decision. It doesn't allow us to say we're not going to get three quotes or less than three quotes for whatever reason, without course, we do course first.
The problem is, I accept what you say, Ben, but the problem is it opens it up to we only get two quotes.
No, it doesn't.
No, it does. It does. Brian, yes, it does. It says here, you cannot get three quotes, then we're going to have two quotes. I'm sorry, it's not good enough. You just have to do your due diligence and go and get.
No, but Tony, it doesn't say that. It says that we, council has to make such arrangements if things are fit for procuring the goods or materials.
And you will then, if you've only got two quotes, accept one of those two quotes?
No, we don't have to, because we could insist, we could go for a third quote.
There's no need to have that in there at all.
We always ask for three. But if, so if we're in that situation, we're then being in a situation where continually trying to get quotes, if you have an issue, if there was a fundamental issue, we don't have the standing order, we don't have the financial regulation to accommodate the issue. That's giving us the power as a council to make a decision.
To have two quotes?
If, so if.
My point is, we shouldn't be in that position. We should always go out and get three quotes regardless.
I fully agree with you, but we need, we need to have a, we need to have a very broad policy to deal with as many potential case problem, or case, cases that come through it.
We shouldn't be put in this position and we have to make a decision on two quotes.
Four quotes.
But that's.
Can I come in here, please? Yes, yes. Okay, let's have another opinion. Frankly, I'm sorry, I have to.
I would say. No, I think. I think I'm betting on the policy that we have set in place in terms of our procurement strategy. And the amount of money that, the budget that we have, if it's less than a specific amount, we can decide to go for just one. However, if we move beyond that threshold, then we can consider a three quote for us to pick one. So it's up to us to agree on if we are going to pick a 10K, we can decide to go for one quote. If it's more than that, then we can stick to three quote for us to decide which one to go for.
Which is, you have got that. It does say the clerk shall invite quotes from at least three firms, at least.
That's what the amendments regulation arrangements do, but if you're meant E, it just, it doesn't do anything other than.
Can I just point out at the top, well, three is obviously the desire in every case. When it came to the delivery of the annual report last year, we ended up with one company only.
Well, in that case, the council can make the decision then, can't they? So if, if it was changed to say that we must get three quotes, if when you actually come down to it, you only get, you only physically can get two, if that does happen, that would then have to go to council and say, even though we have to get three, we have only been able to get two. So what do the council want to do? So it's like a, that's like a catch-all then.
But that's what, that's what it actually is. That's what it's for.
No, no, no.
No, it comes back to hundred grand. And you put your quotes.
Yeah, but the thing is, what we're saying is that he wants the fact that we, the target should be three quotes. But what he's, if I understand what Tony's saying, he's saying that this is built into this is a danger that the council or the person who's collecting the quotes will just look for two quotes rather than the three, which is the, you know, better value for money for the constituents.
To me, Terry, the way you've just explained that situation there and how that decision is made by council, clause E is what gives council the ability to make that decision, because it says if less than three quotes are received, it's not going to say you cannot get less than three quotes. You have to go through that process of getting quotes. If we don't have quotes and the process hasn't been followed, then the financial regulation has not been followed. Clause E.
So what my view is, that the beginning sentence of that should say, three quotes are a bigotry, however, if circumstances say, or, you know, if circumstances all that, oh, two are available for whatever reason, then the rest of it, all, you know, all that rest of the sentence stands. But I don't think, as it reads there, I agree with what it's saying. It just, whoever's getting the quotes could just get two quotes and then come to the council and say, oh, I've only got two quotes. You know, so I think it is, I think it's the normal process of financial management that you get three quotes. So I don't see what the difficulty of putting that into that sentence is. And then if three quotes, if three quotes are not available for whatever reason, which will come out in the discussion of the council, then they can decide whether to go ahead with one of the other two quotes.
Thank you, Terry. And Michael, you wanted to say something?
No, I've made my.
Okay, Tom, you wanted to say something? Tom?
Because, yeah, you're right, okay. One of the things which I would like to read out is eleven point three, so the, in this eleven point one, the clerk shall invite quotes from at least three forms to be taken from the appropriate list. So in that vein, I think E as it stands right now, I agree with Ben, that if less than three quotes are received for contracts, I think that'll do. I think, I think there is a provision already in the, in the regulation that we should look for at least, at least three forms. Is, am I clear? Am I clear?
Yeah.
To me, Tom, yes, thank you.
Brian, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I do. But also, this preferred Rachel, who's one of our officers, who understands it more than anybody, should be able to speak. As you said around it for ages, Rachel to speak before I will, and then I would like to come in afterwards. Thank you, Tony.
All right. Rachel, what would you like to say?
I was about to say what Tom just said. So thank you, because the way these regulations actually were, eleven point three, the very first paragraph where it does say, the clerk shall invite quotes from at least three tenders to be taken from the appropriate list. That has to happen. All the, the other items and the amendments would need between A and F are, after that initial instruction or directive has been applied, these then follow. So no matter what, at least, so it's not three, it's at least three have to be. Have to be. what, at least, so it's not three, if at least three have to be, have to be, or we have to find a payment, then item E is, if out of those three or more quotes that people have applied for, if less than three do come in, or if a couple of them match, then council have to make a decision to either choose one of them or to go for more quotes. So this is all related to the initial paragraph of the 11.3, and that's the way that financial regulations work, exactly how Tom, what Tom was explaining as well.
Three doesn't actually say what you've just said.
11.3, that's why.
Sorry, E doesn't, E, sorry, E doesn't say what you've just said.
You've got to read the top paragraph.
No, you have to, 11.3 is.
I've got 11.3, you need three quotes from a list. Well, what's this list? Where is it?
Well, I mean, it would be from local providers or, I mean, it's going to have to be someone, you know, that has got a good credit rating. So it's not just generally, you know, sort of.
So quoting from somebody that lives in a flat in St Paul's was somebody who's got possibly a good credit rating, which is what has happened in the past?
I can confirm.
Fine, okay. All I'm just trying to, all I'm just trying to put across is that by putting in E, it leaves the option for the officers to only go out and get two quotes.
No, no.
Does?
No, the first paragraph.
But it says, if less than three quotes are received.
You've got to read E as a tail-on from the main paragraph of top six nine.
Eleven, 11.3.
I have.
Applied and then.
Gives you the option that you'll need to have the quotes.
No, because as officers, we'd have to get at least three quotes.
It doesn't say that, though.
But in 11.3.
Last line.
No, it's, right, if you take an example, a live example.
Yeah, I was just speaking next after Rachel. I had a lot of people are putting in, and you've actually come back as well afterwards, having a great discussion.
Brian, what did you like to say?
I'd like to say we will accept Ben's proposal because it makes common sense. And it does appear that the chair is actually really sort of not understanding what E is, as far as I'm concerned, because E actually gives the council the right to actually determine that. So it's not a problem. And the reality is, sometimes things are time sensitive. And that could be a problem. There's also a problem with, I'm not sure this has actually been stated before, but I'm very unhappy when somebody comes in and they haven't been to meetings and we get two quotes and the council's going to decide on it in this particular manner. And they say, oh, no, I even know somebody that's got that. They could do that. They then got information on what the quotes were. So they could feed that back, which I'm not very happy about as well. So there's lots and lots of things which could be done. But I think this one is not a problem. And you need to read that, Tony. And we've got a proposal on the table from Ben. I'm second it. And I think it should be held now. That's it.
Well, yeah, Brian, but people who haven't had a chance to have a say, you have. Thank you very much.
A new proposal?
Yeah, yeah, okay. And we're not ready to take the proposal.
Please don't keep interrupting everybody when they say things. I mean, back insisting you write.
Well, the chair, Brian, I think that's a little bit uncool for, however.
Chairs don't do that. They're supposed to, they're supposed to run a meeting that everybody.
Brian, yeah, you run in the good side, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. We'd like other people to have their viewpoint before we make a proposal. And I don't think everyone's had their view. You were saying something, Terry, before you got in trouble.
I was just going to say that it's very clear in 11.3 that the clerk will invite three quotes. But it then says in E that that could then result in two quotes. And it doesn't, there's nothing in E that directs the alignment with that statement in 11.3. So I think we could just add in there, as it, council may make such arrangements as it thinks fit for procuring the goods or materials or executing the works, which could include additional quotes. That could be it then.
That does, yeah.
Sorry, we've actually got elsewhere, chairman, in there, that all quotes will be received and opened in the presence of a councillor, I think, at the town park. Now, what you're saying goes totally against that because you're proposing that subsequent bids will be accepted.
No, I'm just saying that if only two quotes are received, then the council could make arrangements, whatever those arrangements might be, which could include asking for further quotes, which would also then be opened in view, in full, you know, view of all councils, councillors.
Well, no, because, but there's no, so where I read this, there is no need for amendment, because the situation Terry's explaining is what council would do. That would make the decision based on that, based on that scenario, or any scenario for that matter, because that's what E allows you to do. E.
But there's no, there's no need, there's no issue. We put in those by doing that then, because it just.
But that's clarifying it, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly.
But it's supposed to be a clause to say that council receives a situation from its officers and they're presented with the situation, and then you make a decision. So the council may make such arrangements as it thinks fit for procuring goods and materials. You could decide you don't want to execute that and you don't think the process has been fit. Therefore, you want to go back and get more quotes. And like, my.
So clarifying that, so clarifying that in E is, 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 I think, going to sort the debate we're having here. It just seems to be a resistance to actually picking that sentence.
And if that extra bit in would just clarify, it doesn't change the, the actual, it's the council that ultimately makes the decision. And if you've got that, which could include seeking further quotes and following due process.
Or rerunning the process from the beginning because we, Ben, got a situation like Mike was in, say.
Yeah.
So all being.
So you're running the process.
Yeah, yeah. Would you be happy with that, Tony?
Yeah, that's right. I'll go along with that. Can we have a proposal then?
Ben, I think I'll.
Oh, sorry, Tom.
Yeah, Ben actually proposed, I'd be honest, second it, to be honest. That's hard.
Well, no, I think Ben was proposing a different thing. But Ben, if you want to, if you want to, if you want to propose what I've just suggested, then I'm happy with that.
So what were you going to say?
So initially we'll say, on the end of it, just add in, which could include seeking further quotes or rerunning the entire process.
Oh, God. Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Ben's proposed that.
Oh, sorry, Tom.
Lovely.
I'll second it then.
You seconded it, Brian?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Good. Okay, so there's a favor.
Are you none of us, I think?
Yeah.
Can I just, um, all right, Ed, did you, was that in place?
Come on, sorry, what's Rachel saying? Is that going to be?
No, I was going to say, the paragraph applies in other sections as well. So it would need the, amongst all of the paragraphs, that have the same wording. So my 11.2B does mention that less than three tenders are received. So this proposal would actually include all of these paragraphs. So that would be two applied.
Come on, this is a bit complicated, very, very quickly. So in advance to propose an amendment today, was what was discussed at a previous meeting, which is the stuff in red. If we've then got an issue with item E, which is then a further proposal to amending in.
That's fine, you can just.
Surely that should be Rachel going back, looking at all the other stuff and then make.
Pick one, pick one.
And then making that decision.
Well, we will need to, we need to come back anyway with financial records when we get the European procurement bit. My, I would suggest that we then amend the other bit when we, when we come back, which will be our full council hopefully for the other one. Yeah?
Yeah, let's do that, yeah.
Oh, sorry, Ed, were you, did you abstain or were you against, or were you in favor?
Ed?
You're on mute.
I would say, and I want to add a suggestion, really, that where people see issues in a piece of work, we're losing so much time on going around what a contract writer should do. So if someone sees something, we'll say, okay, let's review it and come back to it. I've sat here and watched that clock go round for nearly 30 minutes, we're talking about a, a, a piece that could be done in five if someone sat down and said, let me rewrite it to make the point. You know, we've had everybody making comments about everyone else. I think it's a wrong way to run. I just want to make sure. It's fine. People read the documentation you're given in your pack. If you've got any, then have it marked clearly and make the point. I just find we're wasting time and it's irritating. My comment.
Thank you, Ed.
So I actually asked Ed, were you, were you in favor? Did you vote in favor or against or abstain?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
That was nice.
So we're on to eight point two. Yeah, eight point two, amend the standing orders to the word amendment is the additional point.
So obviously, as we, our standing orders, the financial matters bit of standing orders needs to match with financial regulations. So it's adding in the bit that was agreed that contracts over £10,000 shall be opened by the clerk and at least one member of the council, and then adding in the bottom one about all wooded contracts not being paid up, not being paid up unannually, which is what is in financial records. So obviously for a standing order, you have to just propose and second it now. And then if nothing actually happens on that until the next full council meeting, and hopefully by then, we will receive the, the European, yes. So we have a proposal and a second for that one.
Proposal. I second it.
Thank you, council.
Okay. Do you need a favor? No, I don't need to help on that. Okay. Right, so that's moving on then to eight point three. The all sites gas and electricity review. I think there's a piece to say that because of lockdown, we're not reviewing it. That's right, isn't it, Rachel?
Yeah, sorry, I've just lost my, I literally lost my agenda on my table.
Is it?
Yeah.
All sites gas and electric review.
Eight point three, yeah, the, so one of the brokers that had provided some really good quotes for no standing or standing meetings was unexpected to be furloughed in early January. So I did defer this to Tony and Ben, that we were due to invite another buyer, a region to purchase from. And so I had a look at two quotes at the meeting, but obviously, whether the broker had seen it or not, he was able to, I suppose, we brought it back to defer this until later on so that we would have some extra and comparative quotes to make an informed decision. Since then, I take to the broker's way, this is the further up way. He is actually a name for rental brokers that work under the umbrella of a, a utility broking company. And he's actually moved to consultant utilities linked it. And he's expected to be up and running at the beginning of February because he wasn't happy about the situation with the broker company. So he says he's more than willing to invite another broker. It will be exactly the same service of a level of order. They will just be with consultant utilities, it's scheduled to be completely aligned. But it will be the same broker.
Thank you, Rachel. We're deferring this moment in time.
Yes. Please mark to have a look at it then.
Yeah, okay. Now, moving on to number nine, to receive the minutes for the planning environment committee, I've gone on 25th.
It's just to receive them.
Yeah, so we've received the minutes. And to receive the minutes from the leisure youth and leisure committee, 40th of December. Okay, we've received those. And right, the next one is the updates from South Cotteshire council board members. Let's go from the bottom of the zoom panel then. So Franklin, do you have anything?
Yes, please. There's a quick one for me. I think, as you're all aware, Bradley Stoke became epicenter for Covid. And then I think as a council, we have come up with this mass community testing. And Monday was the first day that we started in Bradley Stoke. So I would urge everyone, if you haven't gone there to have any tests, you can go there and you can also communicate it to your individual ward where you then to participate in this mass testing. Thank you.
Is that at the sports centre?
Yes, it is.
The centre. And what's the times for that?
From nine, nine to five P M.
Nine to five, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Right, so we've got, then next is, John, do you have anything referenced, South Cotteshire? No. Keith? Keith, can I, do you have anything in reference to?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Keith.
Yeah. Only one. The Concord Medical Centre Vaccination Centre is now up and running. It is being used by all the medical practices within our whole area. That's Bradley Stoke, Little Stoke, Stoke Efforts, Patchway, all of them. And they're doing it by an arrangement with the practice here at Concord, where it may be Bradley Stoke are using it Friday morning, say, Patchway are using it on Thursday, this and so forth like that. Also, Dr Bradley and his wife Dominique are out doing a flying squad, if you like, going out doing all the elderly people in their doors, on their doors. They were shown on the H T V news the other evening, giving a vaccination to a 94-year-old lady within her porch. So, you know, I mean, they're doing it out of the goodness of their heart, really. I mean, obviously, these people could be being asked to go along to those vaccination centres to have it done. But they are providing that sort of vaccination squad, if you like, where they go out and do it in the hope. So.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you, Keith. Brian, do you guys think from South Cotteshire?
No, I'm going to say that South Cotteshire's still working and the officers are quite busy. And we're looking at the budgets at the moment. We'd share it can be quite difficult to impose loads of tax on you. But that's about it.
Those are the tags on me?
Yeah, and you. Everybody.
Thank you, Brian. Roger, do you have anything?
Um, I've been involved in a few planning committees which have been intense and fraught with, based in the eight, there's Brian on there, because he was on the other ones.
Oh, yeah, he's, he's a reds on that.
Yeah. I think, given how his parents of my mother's scope, I should be swimming in it by then, hopefully.
Yeah. Okay, that's all right. Right, we move on to number 12, financial matters, 2021, 22.
I can't hear anything.
No, nor me.
Yeah.
Can you hear us now?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go for it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this all came out, so.
We're, we're just on the number twelve point one, financial matters, final budget draft and forward plan. Did you want to send us in, Rachel?
Oh, you put your report, um, my report in front of you. Uh, over last meeting, um, it was proposed that, uh, precept be looked at between zero and two percent, um, at least. Um, so linked to that, um, I just updated the, um, the second budget draft that was looked at, uh, by the Centre Finance. Um, so the, uh, uh, the previous year, the budgets have been highlighted in blue and the, um, the budget draft breakdown, if you wanted to go through that.
Sure.
But I have highlighted, um, four oh oh, bank and investment income, and it's minimal changes, uh, it's just increasing the budget to five thousand three hundred based upon recent reinvestments and updated estimates from, um, some of the, uh, bank accounts. Uh, newsletter publishing slightly reduced down to three thousand following the, the contacts that were approved at the Centre Finance. And, um, South Gloucestershire have come in, uh, they have seen the documents and they've come in with their latest price, so it's just like very slightly reducing that budget. I mean, it, it's peanuts, but it, it's better to be accurate, sort of moving forward. Um, so the council would need to approve those of their happiness. It's just reducing the budget from those budgets from ten oh seven six to nine thousand seven hundred. Do you want to make a decision on that at the end or do it now? It, it makes sense to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ben would like to say something, he's got his hand up there.
We're talking about that bit.
All right, Ben's happy to rip those up. Is it, you know?
Uh, I second it.
Tom seconded it? Those in favour? That's unanimous. So.
You can enter the person now, is it?
No, uh, we've got new budget break down there. So, um, I've worked with Graham on this, so, um, he's obviously, uh, going to be involved in this as well. We've tried to, um, answer lots of the questions and you're gonna have to forgive me and you'll probably laugh, but, uh, that's why my ephors laughing. Why, it's a bit, um, um, if a baby, uh, um, so at the moment, uh, the, the, uh, the first part is indicative of excessive youth expenditures. And we were trying to get out just the, um, the funding for, um, uh, for the youth workers, uh, across the core funding and also external funding. So that's just a, a summary. Uh, we've taken out the resources that were previously in there. I can't read the bit, I can't see on this one, is. Um, that were previously in there, so we're getting down to literally, um, the, the youth worker costs, um, uh, linked to the youth provision. Um, and then taking out, uh, some of the current external funding, um, to, to end up with a, a, a final total. Um, so that's the first part, if I just explain sort of how that works first. Um, with, with also sort of details of, of the sections that, uh, each one will cover and the number of hours and everything. Um, then the next is the, is the main breakdown, this one. Uh, that's the one that I need the glasses for. Um, and I do apologize, but to get all the information in, uh, the writing is rather difficult. So we're starting off with, um, the, um, the income code, uh, from the external funding. Can you still hear me? Yes, yeah, okay. From the external funding that, um, that has been secured in that particular year from, um, South Gloucestershire, uh, council. We then move down to, uh, the youth expenditures. I've, I've tried to sort of do it in blocks to explain sort of how this is working. So the first item, five four nine nine, youth grant aid, um, twelve and a half thousand. You will notice that the overall budget has been frozen from last year and the year before. Actually, look at this. So the first one, the youth grant aid, twelve and a half thousand, that is completely controlled by leisure youth amenities, um, who issue grant aids to, um, uh, the sort of youth groups and clubs. Um, um, and that, that's agreed at leisure youth. Um, so that is completely separate to the youth core funding. Um, it's, it's shown there because originally this, um, would have come out of the normal grant funding years ago. But when, uh, the youth provision was set up to sort of maintain sort of, uh, the amount of funding, we separated it off and put it within the youth provision, whereas really it was a grant aid. The next part, which is, I know is the one that, um, is interesting people the most, is the core youth funding. So, uh, it's broken down into, um, we've tried to break it down into sort of separate areas. Uh, the overall amount of core funding is forty one thousand two hundred. So that includes, um, in the first block, thirteen and a half thousand for the youth minibus and associated costs, uh, the youth, um, activities at the community festival, uh, project work events, um, and residential, um, sessional resources, equipment and supplies. So that's all broken down. Now, we call it the core budget because, um, we try, or Graham sort of tries to get additional funding on top. But this core funding is used as the platform to then try and get more external funding. So these are the maximum amounts that can be spent at any time, uh, without external grant funding. Um, the skate park, um, I've shown that in yellow, that's this year it was, uh, reestimated because that's still developing with, um, you know, day-to-day running and sort of contract off. Uh, seven thousand five hundred and twenty. And I know this came out last time, um, Tony, so I've tried to sort of highlight it. Where we're separating it off for next year, that is gonna move down to the bottom and have its own separate code, so that we're separating it off. Um, and we can actually show sort of all the contracts as they come through and itemize expenditures, so there's a lot more detail. Uh, the next item is showing, um, around about twenty thousand, uh, twenty thousand and seventy, uh, for next year. So, um, November, council originally approved the recruitment, the recruitment of additional, um, youth, um, workers. Uh, I know that's coming up later on. Um, so based on this, um, and after the questions that were asked last time, and in addition to the breakdown that has been provided, um, we've tried to, um, explain how it works. So, um, in the current year, had things been open and had youth workers been recruited, um, the core budget would have been twenty, this year, the twenty thousand. The aim, uh, for funding, uh, would be to increase that to thirty seven thousand nine hundred fifty five pounds to get external, uh, youth workers in. Um, so at the moment, we have got additional unspent grant aid, uh, unspent grant aid, um, that, uh, we will be able to carry forward to next year. So the more interesting one is, um, twenty one, twenty two, the budget, um, within the core, um, core youth budget would be twenty thousand and seventy pounds. Um, that would be the maximum that could be spent on youth workers without external grant funding at this stage. Now, grant, external grant funding and previously, um, under spent grant funding is available. So, um, the target amount, uh, would be thirty eight thousand nine hundred four pounds forty, which, um, again, I'll come back to this week because that itemizes the number of hours that youth work, um, at each other and the sessions that are at each other. So based on this, uh, with ten thousand external funding already been agreed, uh, we're fixing a mental spend on, um, these, the grant funding from this year to carry forward, which would be eight and eight thousand nine hundred thirty five. And then the remaining, uh, uh, the funds that's been eleven thousand two hundred thirty carried again, carried forward from under spent in current year. So.
It's external, isn't it?
Uh, uh, yeah, sorry, external under spending. So, um, we're, we're trying to sort of make it clear because I, I know it's quite complicated. So basically, we have a core budget. That budget cannot be exceeded unless there is external funding to reach. This is our get, um, um, level that, that ideally, um, can happen with the on-prest, which have already used yet. But if that external funding is not available, that those workers will not be taken on. So they'll be on limited term contracts or zero contract carries. So, but if funding dropped through the floor and it wasn't available, then we would just have funding within the core budget and we would not be stuck with additional, um, hourly work that we couldn't afford because the external funding destroyed that. Um, so then the next stage, um, number five thousand six hundred with the skate park, that is still working progress because, uh, we're, we're still developing and one of the shipping containers are, are, um, hit about properly. Um, you know, so we will have additional costs like ins, um, um, internet and things like that. So that.
And like you said, Rach, that is just moving it down from above, isn't it? That's the same seven thousand five hundred.
It, it's not adding, so all of that box, that forty one thousand two hundred, that is literally the core youth funding. And that is used as the basis to then get external funding for further sort of various other activities. On the next page, um, we've got the external, uh, grant funding that has already been agreed. And we, these ones, um, it's specifically allocated for youth activities and quite specific youth activities. So we've been really, really strict with this because of the way that our budgets work. So, um, we, we've got the original amount that, um, is, is approved. Whatever balance is left at the end of, um, a financial year, that is immediately rolled. It is the only budget that is rolled out of all of our budgets. And that's because it is specific to youth grant funding. So we either use it for the specific activity for which it was allocated or we have to give it back. So that's why that one is funded, um, sorry, rolled and kept very, um, specific. And the, because we have got, um, the underspent from prior years carried forward, that is what at the moment we are planning to use to fund the, um, the target youth work level for next year and that's gonna come up, uh, later on. Um, on top of that, obviously, within a council, you have to have, um, assets and funds project. Um, that's not an additional budget. Um, if we have, um, any, um, assets that we purchased, like, um, earlier this year, we, our computer was purchased, uh, linked to you. We deduct that from the core budget and just move it over into the fund project. So it's not an additional, everything leaves back to the core budget and so we're used about if, if expenditure requires that. Then, then finally, on the, um, final page, it's the reserves. So we have at the moment, and it's number three or seven nine, we have allocated youth reserves, um, that stand at forty thousand. Um, within that, at the moment, hovering away in the background, um, ten thousand has been approved, um, to kit up the shipping containers. That's pending the seat of comfort earthquakes. So once those quakes come in, that ten thousand then is no longer unallocated. It will move into skate park full development reserve until it's done and then it will move out and disappear out of the earmark reserve. So I'm, I'm trying to demonstrate that we closely monitor all the money within the youth budget. We're not adding sort of money here, there and everywhere. It's really, really, it's tight strips and it works differently to our other budgets because it's reliant, um, to a massive degree on, on obtaining external grant funding. Um, so then the, the final earmark reserve, that was, um, implemented by council. Um, uh, when was that? Um, uh, April nineteen. And that was because at that time, sort of youth budgets weren't being fully spent because the youth provision hadn't fully developed. So I think it was then, um, back in April nineteen, suggested that with the skate park being such a huge, um, asset, the same as we treat, um, our pay areas and activity centers, we should have, um, a, a replacement and maintenance reserve that is just there for the future for any, you know, more expensive repairs that maybe needs, you know, that, that's due to our intent. It's not just the general expenditure. So, um, I'm hoping that that makes it sort of more clear. I don't know, well, do you want to add anything or?
No, I think you've covered it fairly significantly. It's just, uh, not, not you touched on that, I think it's important to know that, um, because the core, we've, we've been doing a lot of infrastructure development in terms of the skate park and, um, the youth buildings, which the councils have been around for a while, knew that there was talk of different locations possibly for that. And then due to the success of a very small building at the skate park, we decided to locate it there. Um, but, um, so we've used previous, we've either, well, as you know from previous reports, we've, we've got a significant amount of external funding over the last few years, I think over three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand core and revenue funding. Uh, and that is, in a sense, has safeguarded some of the core D S T money, which then you guys agreed to roll over. Uh, and we've used that to contribute to some of the infrastructure development. But we're now at the point where we need the revenue funding to employ the people so we can fully work the resources that you've invested in. For example, getting the shipping containers open three times a week as a youth building, uh, as well as doing our detached sessions and work. Because it's important to do work across the community. I think that's one of the things that has helped in recent years. Um, I'd like to think made a positive impact on reducing levels of antisocial behaviour is because we've made to, we've been able to develop positive relationships with not just one group of young people, but quite a large age spectrum of different cohorts.
That's in twenty twenty-one, please, sir. Uh, we're, we're on this, um, agenda, so to say, we're gonna detail, we're gonna have a detailed discussion on the youth budget.
Because this comes into the, uh, third budget draft, it's half the budget draft and the.
Yeah, but, but we have this, both of the budget draft and search for them. And then there's like the stacks of it now to discuss, if you want to. So why, why are we focusing on youth budget also?
Because council have previously asked for, um, a, a separate youth banet.
Yeah, why are we doing it?
To the budget breakdown, so I was just trying to get it into a format that. that, um, is understandable to move forward with for the future. So...
Pretty good, uh, yeah.
Did you want to say something? Not this night?
I think, do you want, should we just move on to the preset? Or do you want to, uh, uh, are there any questions for the sort of budget breakdown? Or do you want to, uh, discuss that all at the end?
I was going to ask a question on the, the twenty twenty one year end position within the five year forward plan. So the projected position is based on the assumption that the total income budget is achieved. And that all expenditure budgets are spent.
Yeah.
And the leader is currently predicted that expenditure will be below budget, partly due to the impact of COVID.
Yeah.
Which will then increase the current estimated year end surplus above the projected level. Why have we based the assumption that the income budget will be out of the set of change?
Um...
Can you get it, can you?
It, it's, it's just the way our five year forward plan works because you, you have to base it on something. Only enough, I figure out we are actually focused achievers. And, uh, from, uh, recent work that I've been at, that is, uh, we should be, uh, reach target. And if we don't, bearing in mind that the bulk of the income is pre-set, it's not going to be by a great deal. And also bearing in mind that, um, we did slash the, uh, the income from the activity centers uh, back in June, quite, quite rightly. Um, but what's helping us greatly is that we are receiving local restriction grant aids. Um, so, um, we're getting a thousand pounds, um, every, every couple of weeks for Baywatch Court and Jubilee Centre at each. And six hundred sixty seven pounds for Brookway, and that's based upon our, um, business rate. So we weren't expecting that grant and it's beginning to, to add up quite substantially. So that's helping sort of bridge the gap. So between the two, the grant aids that we've secured and the fact that we slashed our, um, activity centre income projections, we will reach a hundred percent of income if not exceed it.
Pretty good.
You back here?
Right, so, um, are we going to propose this is a set of presets?
Right, but if that was all the...
Sorry, final budget loss and forward back.
Should, should we just move on to the, um... Do, do you want to see the preset or do you want to sort of go on with the...
Yeah, good preset then.
Okay. So, um... So what I've done, I, I've followed sort of council's direction. Um, but just as a reminder, the way to finance, and I put it in again because, uh, obviously, um, this was a prompter. Um, uh, before making the decision, council had got to consider the, uh, the Brookway development decision to ring thanks a hundred thousand from the old site refurbishment budget. Um, what I need to change that from, uh, additional year end surplus. Uh, if not, we're going to have to go for a couple of works loan. Um, uh, Baywatch Court Play Area. And in an ideal world, we would have paid that, uh, about that, uh, sort of grant already for the fifty thousand that Dell has been dealing with. Um, and so panels have also been mentioned. So I'm just sort of reminding council, um, uh, about those items. Um, at, um, earlier, um, this month, um, quite rightly, after about surrounding preset from, uh, surrounding areas. So, um, I, I have got all the information and issued, uh, the table that you can see there, which is quite a useful guide just to see, uh, how our levels fit with those around us. That is for twenty 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 one and obviously not for next year. But I think being one of, you know, sort of the, the sort of larger, uh, councils, that we're in a good position there. Um, so below that, the next page down, um, again, I just did, um, a summary of the different options relating between the naught percent preset and a two percent preset increase. Um, highlighting in the fourth column along what the, uh, preset level would be per AMN per band group property. So at the moment, it's a hundred sixteen pounds ninety four. And obviously that's, uh, with a zero preset that would remain the same. And then obviously going up in levels is specified within the table. And also itemizing the actual increase to band group property. Um, uh, obviously that will be for, um, those above the band here. It will be slightly more, but not a huge amount. And again, it will be less for those, um, between, um, band AMC. Uh, total preset, hopefully shown there. The projected position, um, at the year end, uh, the end of March twenty two. Uh, again, um, that's based on the assumption that all income and expenditure budgets are either achieved or spent during the year. We, we are very, very restrictive with our budgets. Um, and we've always had a surplus, uh, to date. So that's to take that, um, in, in mind. The, uh, the, the, the end column is showing the projected position at the end of the five year period on the thirty first of March twenty twenty five. Now, that does assume a naught point five percent annual increase, uh, from, uh, twenty two, twenty three, and, and we're going through because that was the format that we all found was set up in. Uh, but I think that shows a really, really strong position. And just to let you know before sort of coming into the meeting, I looked at the, uh, the centre CPI that was issued today and that's funding at naught point eight percent. Um, I don't know if that additional information helps. And then finally, again, just highlighting that, um, looking at the figures and bearing in mind, uh, you know, the lockdown that we're going through and the possibility that it's going to go on longer than was predicted, um, our expenditures are likely to remain fairly, um, flat for, for certain projects. Uh, so we will exceed the projections of the sixty two thousand seven hundred and three pounds year on, year on surplus that we're expecting. Um, and any additional surplus, I would, um, I, I would then direct into the areas as, as I specified in the table. So the, uh, first of all, the development of Brookway to, um, is about a hundred thousand pounds a decision. Um, and restore the old site refurbishment as much as possible. Um, possibly into the play area if, um, if we don't get the grant that we're hoping for, uh, although we might not necessarily need that. Um, we also need to, um, restore the hardcore, uh, uh, surface repair because, uh, we, we've just spent that. And then, uh, anything left over can go into the future budget funding reserve, which then impacts future presets in a very positive way. So, um, at the end of, I, I know I put it in the table as well, but at the end of this report, I've also attached the, the summary, um, going through ranging across the, the various preset options that you've got available. I don't know if there's any other information that you, you want for this page?
Um, Ben wanted to say something on this matter. So Ben?
So, yeah, um, with lots of presets, um, whilst in the finance meeting, we initially had higher estimates based on thinking about large projects, exception in the future, and that kind of have a debate. We brought it down to a smaller range, which I think was sensible, um, which is what we did. And then I've kind of been thinking about this myself, just morally over the last two months when we were, since we had that meeting. And for me, I'm finding, I'm trying to gauge the opinion of other panics and surely, because I'm just finding it a bit difficult thinking about the impacts and potentially what others might be going, uh, you know, having trouble in the community with jobs and what have you at the moment. And considering we're like in quite a good financial state and the projected end of year position at the end of the thirty first of March twenty twenty two would still have a surplus, even if we didn't do any uplift to our, uh, presets this year. And I'm a bit, I'm just wrestling morally about what, uh, what the thing, what the right decision to do is in my head. Um, because I keep thinking that we should probably try and not do anything, not have any increase because there are going to be numbers of that community who have been impacted this year in some way, shape or form, even though we are talking about a very small increase per year. And I just think morally, I, I'm struggling to agree with, um, having that there.
I think that's admirable, what you've just said there, Ben. And I know John Ash is in the same sentiments that we shouldn't put anything up.
Yeah, I agree with that as well.
Um, I think as strong conservatives, we, we have always been conservative in what we do.
I'd love to speak for that.
I would agree with that as well. I think I'm reached good, so...
Yeah. It's the, it's only the right thing to do and, and like Ben said morally.
Okay, take, take a second. We got, we, we, put your hand up if you want to speak because it's, it's getting very pity again.
Yeah.
While you were speaking.
I was saying originally, I thought perhaps point five percent because, only because Rachel's factored it in on the five year plan and, uh, probably, uh, without having to go through all those, uh, problems again, it might be easier. But, um, I think possibly, um, okay, I'd go along with a zero percent increase. Uh, you know, looking at the hardships endured by many families and, uh, et cetera, so...
Harry?
I absolutely agree. I think it's the, it's the right and proper thing to do. I think we've just got to be, we've got to be sort of, you know, um, supporting the residents in this, in this dreadful time. So I think it's the only right and proper thing to do.
Hello, John? Sorry, John, just got his hand up. You need to unmute yourself, John.
Yeah, so I, I was going to go for naught point, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was going to go for naught point five percent. But I haven't heard, I haven't heard what my colleague said. I think a zero percent is correct because we don't know what South Gloss is going to do. We can have a good guess. It's going to be nearly five percent. And then we've got the police and we've got the fire authority on top. And even if we get only point five percent, which is less than a quid a year, it still shows on the council tax bill, essentially put it up. Yeah. So, um, I'm fully supportive of, uh, no worries at all.
Um, we'll go for Andy first at the top.
I tend to agree when you consider that our year end situation is actually probably going to be better than what we've got in front of us now. I think it's a no brainer and I agree with what John's saying. It's been a hard year for everybody and I think it's, it's supporting the residents.
Okay, Ben would like to say something, then Roger.
So I would like formally prepare a stand-up increase in the preset by nothing.
Okay.
I would second that, um, especially in light of South Gloss, which is four point nine nine percent increase. Yeah, fine, yeah, huge.
Okay, then. So we've got a proposal by Ben. We leave it at zero percent. We've seconded it by Roger. Um, those in favour? That's unanimous.
Yeah.
Unanimous. Thank you. Right, so we...
Can you also approve the final budget draft and forward plan? If I pay for that naught percent?
Right. What do you think?
She wants, so to actually approve the, the forward plan based on the naught percent, which is, but the final draft and forward plan and the naught percent.
That's what we're going to talk about later. Who's in your budget? Very far. Okay, we've, we've got proposition here from Ben that we propose the, uh, preset.
The forward plan, yeah.
Based on that here, so...
Yeah, so the forward plan as, um, based on a zero percent.
Yeah.
So it's like, please, 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 please. Let's oppose to second it.
Hey, good sir.
Tom, I think so.
Tom.
Tom seconded, Ben. So those in favour? Don, you disappeared.
Yeah, I've got his number.
Okay.
Yeah, do you remember? Thank you.
Okay, let's move on then. So, um, we're going now to the twelve point three, twenty twenty one investment update.
Uh, I, just really quick, it's, well, just for information, so out of your public domain. Um, we, council actually Cambridge and Tantys, uh, one point seven one year fixed rates business bond and the United Touch Bank one year fixed rate business bond, um, that we're securing in December. It's just to clarify that we, uh, reminded that what the council, uh, approved and after contacting Chair because, um, um, United Touch Bank offers various options of reimbursement, is, uh, the federal, um, uh, amount is moving and has been rolled into further one year fixed rate on, uh, with both Cambridge and Tantys and United Touch Bank. Unfortunately, the rates are, are very, very low, naught point five percent and one percent. But, um, it's a three year space and discussing drawing through to the future. And just to clarify, I've also, um, accepted an investment summary of all the investments that, um, council do hold and that few dispossessions are. Um, because late, especially with the late, um, resigning and with a few other, um, situations. Some things that we are going to have to redraw at that date, um, fifty that, uh, for all our investments. So it would really have to be that day because, um, that action has always been approved.
Thank you, Rachel. Uh, I could want to say something?
No, Rachel's shot my fox.
Okay. Right, so, um, we do, we don't need to approve it at the moment. Right, the, uh, theft of the lead flashing from the roof pathway activity centre. And my only question on this is, um, what have we discovered from the scanning of the CCTV?
Hi, Ian has started to look back from the CCTV. We don't actually know what date it happened. So there was the video of the CCTV to look back at.
How far can we go back on this?
Go back a month.
Yeah.
So we will, I'm sure Dell will be on the case as well on that one.
Who's, who's looking at it?
Ian, the, um, leisure assistant who's based at Brookway, but I'm about to...
Is he on the approved list of people that can look at the video?
Good question. No, it might have to be Dell to look back, or Dell's probably on that side of that.
Okay, thanks, Dell.
Um, if I give you a global update, so, um, we've now got, uh, so we've had a temporary repair done, um, to keep the rain out. That cost us nine pounds plus VAT, and we'll be able to get that back from the insurance. We now have two quotes in. Uh, the first one, contractor one, is for a non-led replacement and it's nine hundred fifty plus VAT. Contractor two has quoted nine hundred and seventy plus VAT for a led replacement or eight hundred and fifty plus VAT for a regular, brackets, non-led replacement. So I'm just seeking guidance from councillors, which one you would prefer. I mean, we have to pay two hundred and fifty pounds... we have to pay two hundred and fifty pounds extra, but we should get all the rest of the money back from the shop something.
What's the difference between, uh, a lead, a non-lead?
Uh, really, it's a case of, I think the lead would last longer, but it's more liable stolen.
Yeah. What's the non-lead one? What's the, could he think?
Yeah, it's, they, they do use it quite a lot, um, so.
And, and there's another vendor option?
Yeah.
Why aren't they all quoted the same thing?
Well, two of them, uh, you have got the two quotes for non-led, one of which was nine hundred and fifty and the other one was eight hundred and fifty. And then contractor two did actually put a quote in as well, if council wanted to go for a lead replacement, which was only five pounds more than the contractor one.
And how much was the render?
Uh, the render was eight hundred and fifty plus VAT.
Just a little bit, that one, you, what I got?
Well, yeah, but it's to, to take the tiles off and make good on the needs and, yeah.
Uh, will they be cutting a lead flashing then, on the bottom, if they have to remember?
The, the quote says to remove the remains of the existing lead sheet and broken tiles, et cetera, recover the sheet with a uni-plex lead replacement or render. Replacement of broken tiles and flashings, et cetera, all materials, blunt and labour included.
I think the, um, gentleman, I know that for a hundred pounds saving, the saving may be considerably more had we got to replace the lead again in
six months.
Six months, probably months, so I would go for a non-lead option.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Or render.
Or render, yeah. I mean, we've got, I think we've got to steer away from the lead because obviously that's what's caused the problem in the first place.
All right, you've got your hand up. What do you have to say?
Yeah, yeah, I, I quite agree. We should definitely not go for lead. However, some of the, uh, proprietary materials which they use, which are not lead, actually look like lead. So we'll, we'll be able to strip it off anyway. I mean, there, there's the other, uh, one you can go for, uh, I must admit, it's interesting because we've got two quotes. And, uh, you've not mentioned that, I tell you, not that much. But in reality, you could also go for fiberglass, uh, because a lot of the people now are putting fiberglass in, uh, which seems to work quite well. Um, and of course, you have got to do rendering, uh, in any event, even with lead. So, you know, I think, you know, fiberglass might be a different thing, but that may well delay things. So, uh, I, I guess that works a bit. Thanks.
Yeah, Brian, on your little quick comment there, I haven't made any comment about only two quotes, it's because it's under ten thousand pounds.
It's actually under a thousand pounds.
Okay. So let's move on. So, um, what do you want to do with this one? Do we want to put a non-lead replacement?
Well, I propose that to children, I think Jerry seconded it.
So which one you have, you have the two choices then. So do you want to go for the, um, the actual non-lead replacement flashing, which is nine hundred and fifty pounds, or do you want the render finished in grey, which is eight hundred and fifty?
I think this is a subject on which I have no expertise and I'm afraid to take office of advice.
Uh, yes, one, one second, there's Andy would like to say something. Andy?
But just, you know, we've had an issue with this in some rental property that I've got recently. And, uh, we tried to turn down the render route and that actually caused more damp problems because the render itself became damp. I would suggest going for either a lead replacement or the fiberglass that, uh, Brian mentioned. That, that worked quite well for what we did, so avoiding lead.
Yeah, and, uh, Ed would like to say something? Ed?
Uh, hi. Yeah, I, I think why the lead was seen because it looked like lead. Um, I've lived in a property that had a flat roof with a lot of lead and basically it's painted. So it's painted with snowstone, uh, a water, another covering. So it didn't actually show its lead unless you really went and scored it with a knife. Um, so. There you go.
Okay, that, um, Ed's come up with the suggestion that we could, whether it's lead or, or a look-alike lead or a, or a substitute not being lead.
Ah, with, with, uh, with the, uh, sorry, sure, with the fiberglassing, you generally can get about a ten year guarantee on them as well. They're maybe a bit more expensive, but, and it definitely doesn't look like lead. I'm just wondering whether or not, um, we could quickly sort of get a situation where the chairs decide on if another quote comes through, um, whether or not they could do it for fiberglass. The fiberglass is horrendously more expensive than they could determine it, but obviously you want to get something done. But I think fiberglass may be, maybe a best bet. Um, I also had a situation with a bit of a problem and the fiberglass really, 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 really well.
Um, just before you come in, Tom, um, Keith was, uh, wanting to say something. Keith?
He's got his hand up.
Just go your hand up, Keith. Okay, Tom, what would you like to say?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Go on then, Keith, yeah.
Yeah, uh, the fiberglass is an excellent, excellent option. I've got it on both of my doorboards. And it's got a twenty year guarantee. Now, when you consider that, that's a long time. With the lead, you can get what they call smart water put on the product, which makes it unsellable if they take it in for scrap. But that's just a thought, if you want to look at that or look into it. But, um, fiberglass is very good. It depends who you go to. And as I say, twenty years guarantee is, is just.
Okay, thank you, Keith. And Tom?
Thank you. Uh, one of the things which I, uh, see with the different submissions is Ed Rose mentioned painting it, the lead. Either the lead is actually much cheaper and if, uh, painting is a cheaper option, why can't we go for that and paint it?
Thank you, Tom.
Lead is actually the, the most expensive option, I'm there.
Oh, okay. You like fiberglass or all that type of glass then?
Well, yeah, I mean, I haven't got a quote for fiberglass. Could I suggest then that we get a quote for fiberglass, um, and then do it by Chair's approval?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Well, it's worth proposing that as we suggested it.
Yeah.
Damage to some roof part as well, so that would be, uh.
That's included with the, uh, replacement of broken tiles and flashings is in, uh, yeah.
I think what's most important is that everyone puts for the same span. Because this is what makes it very difficult, aid for councils who are not quite familiar with building, but, um, there, they, there should be a little, tiny little specification down the nature, all be put in the same shape.
Yeah.
Anyway, so we've got a proposal that we, um, uh, quickly go back.
Before we go in town.
No, we should be back now. You hear us?
Yeah.
Yeah, so get fiberglass quote, um, and then there's the final decision by Chair's approval.
Okay, so, uh, if you, you propose that, Brian? Would you like to second it?
No, I'll second it.
Second by Keith. Those in favour? Uh, yeah, unanimous. Yeah, unanimous. Good, let's move on then. Um, approval of the, uh, Phil's direct debits for payments. My only comment is, um, um, I guess we already are in lock pen. Sharon?
Yes.
So the buildings are being used?
Um.
Popniosis.
And do you believe being used? Yeah, the labs and preschool, they use forks used for NHS training and preschool.
Okay, it's just that we've, we've got cleaning ban, which is presumably for all, all the hours, including the skate park. Um, should we not be saying as for example, for example, skate park shut down, um, until eighty seven, correct? And I don't know whether there's a reduction, should be a reduction in cleaning, if so.
I've got one.
Yeah, lost.
One.
But, but Malal's acknowledged it's been a horrendous year and so for the third year of their contract, when they were aiming to increase the pots for full sites, then up there, three gate. And they're also carrying out hogging of the various areas when we need it. Um, and now and then at no charge, which would be, I think, to fifteen hundred pounds was, yeah, yeah.
I, I just find it's, um, it's, if they're not doing.
Lost again?
Yeah. We're back, hopefully.
My, my comment was that regardless of what they said that they would do for free is, well, that's their prerogative. All I'm saying is that if we're not using all the rooms so much or, or the centres so much, why are we paying for the amount of cleaner? As we are in a lock pen. Assuming they're not doing anything to the skate park. That's been shut for a long, long.
I do agree on that one. I, I got my eye on. Graham, that's a Graham question, I think.
We, um, initially, I know they were doing, because the, the, until we had that new floor and put, uh, outside the, the front doors to the skate park, the, the, it was getting really, really dirty at the time we used the containers. So they did do a period of deep clean, but yeah, I think it's a reasonable point. We, we're still going in there and viewing CCTV and using it as a base for some of that outreach. But no, we haven't got the footfall of a lot of people going in there. And so, uh.
Last, we'll ask Malal to add that.
And nearly another thing, you've got an inkjet printer. Is that inkjet printer ink?
Or you've just got a new inkjet printer for eighty nine, ninety eight pounds?
Uh, that is to replace the inkjet printer in the office here, which gave up the ghost.
So inkjet printer, it's a big.
Yeah.
Just, I shouldn't think it would be very long?
No, no.
They make money out of the ink, but.
Yeah, actually they are. Well, actually, don't, don't, don't think, the ink cartridges that those ones use are quite cheap. They're not as expensive as like bigger laser jets, but it is just a basic or standard printer, but yeah.
And sorry, the last, there is last two, two more, um, question. One is the on the back on D one, also got HP laser jet, yeah, that's in, it's three hundred and twenty five.
Yeah, that's for the big, our big printers, which sells all the colour, that's a laser jet.
I saw the contract.
You're a blackguard.
We're back, we should be back, yes.
Sweet.
I know.
Um, all right.
Our technical term on the quality, microphone.
Yeah, I apologize for that. Uh, right, on the, um, the last bit is, um, web package support additional hours October to December and web store support package January to April. And you've got a total bill there of five hundred and fifty five pound plus that. What was that for?
That's, uh, Matt that maintains our website.
But is additional hours, why do you have to do additional hours?
He's had to do additional hours because as we obviously are putting a lot more stuff on our website, especially due to COVID and all the, you know, will be, um, whereas before we would just send in the agenda and the draft minutes, now we're having to send in all the documents and so they all need to be uploaded and, yeah.
And you can hold.
Yes, everything has to be on.
What we got?
The one refund.
No, we'll, we'll get our net, I'll get our net to look at it. And I think we'll send that microphone back and I think we might need to invest in a new, um, camcorder. To be honest.
And then the last thing.
No, that was three hundred and something, I think. The actual, um, camcorder that we've had for several years now.
And the last one is on, um, fourteenth, which was Tom Harris removed, replaced patio area, he was called.
Yeah, that's the, uh, remember that.
That was the name of the guy that was the contractor, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. That's all my questions, one on that. Anybody else got any questions on the payments?
Yeah, go on, Chair.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, on one zero three one, boiler repair for two hundred and eighty two pounds. Do you know what that one was broken down as? On what? On bed.
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah.
Right, okay, it was the, uh, as I say, the boiler break down.
No, I think it's, it's Sharon and the room that they, that we found it in.
No, it, it's not, it's not us, it's not the room, it's the technology, unfortunately. Bear with me. I can tell, I'm just looking it up on the, uh, there. So, the copy noise is here. Is it, let's see one.
I presume it's a gas boiler, is it?
It is to supply and fix spark electrodes and burner gasket following reports of no hot water.
And how old is the boiler?
Quite a few years, I think.
It's out of the warranty, I take it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. If it was in warranty, believe me, we would be there on that one.
Right, I mean, does seem quite high, but, um, you know, obviously it's, uh, been done, so we might pay to review in the future.
Sadly, Keith, on commercial boilers, you, your warranty is one year. But the same boiler you can put into a domestic and it's ten years.
Yeah, it depends. If it's serviced regularly every year, some of these boilers now, they've got a ten year warranty. But, uh, yeah, I mean, that's what I asked about the age of it, but, um, but yeah, you know, it does sound, I, I wondered if that was included in the annual service or gas safety certificate?
We do get all that done anyway annually, so, yeah.
But that wasn't included on that price there?
No.
No. Okay, all right.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, Terry.
Andy, I, I, I just come back to a comment that you made also, um, before about the, um, the local grass cutting, et cetera. And I did notice when I was out and about in one of my walks that the grass is being cut, but the sort of nettles and everything else that are, uh, along the, the walls are not, don't seem to be getting done.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will be on that one next year, I assure you.
Okay, so do they not do that, do they not do that at the same time as cook? Because they have cut the grass.
I don't think, but they've done their last cut for this season, I think, because we've been paying this amount, you know, then, um. But we will definitely look at that once they start again in spring.
Okay, thank you.
I acknowledge that a bit, it's not, you know, we will definitely look at that. Okay, thank you.
Move on, move on, move on. Um, so we've, uh, we've approved these, have we?
We have.
Approved for the, uh, Keith, second there. Tom, I think was first up with his hand. Sorry, Joe. Uh, sorry, not Tom, uh, Ed, yes. Those in favour? Unanimous. Yeah. Unanimous.
Very much.
Right, the, uh, next one, uh, to do its Mercedes matters. Uh, to consider revisiting the decision made on the.
True.
Oh. Right, it's.
We're back, you guys? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, it's thirteen point one, um. Uh, it's to, um, but we need to change the policies first, don't we? Boiler guard.
Want to do the others first then?
Yeah, we, we go to thirteen point two first. Uh, policies procedures, um. First of all, there's the adoption of the Braddy Stoke Town, Town Council tree management policy. It, uh.
This is, this is what, um, Dell has drafted and used from her when she was in Armsbury. Um, and we don't actually have a tree management policy. We do carry out tree surveys and we have risk assessments, but we haven't actually got the tree management policy, so we thought it would be prudent to have one. This is just the draft, uh, similar to the one that they have in Armsbury with a few alterations made. More relevant to us, yeah.
Okay, it's, uh. Sorry? Turn it up, turn it on. Ed, yeah. Sorry, Tom, just for a second, Ed first and then Tom.
Couple of quick points, I've read it through fairly. So referring to section two, paragraph. Or, uh, where it says that the work in progress has to have their public liability insurance, referring to be on the land. Uh, it should be referred to the job because to access a tree, you may not be on Braddy Stoke council land, you may be on someone else's land with their permission. Therefore, your certificate must cover the job point. Um, next paragraph, I don't understand what is a healthy relationship without definitions. Uh, unless you're dealing with me and it's toxic, but never mind. Over the page, I suggest that the second point of the dot, uh, you've already have removed dangerous. Therefore, I would add the word to repair damaged limbs because that can be done by bracing or tape. So I think there's the aspect of that, otherwise.
What was that? Oh, not in the top. So where it says remove dangerous and damaged limbs, you put remove or repair, did you say?
Yes. There's this, this message of repair of limbs, so that the bent or twisted, um, you know, so.
So that one where you said about the tree surgeon carrying out any work? So would we just have on behalf of the town council then?
Yeah, it's just to reach out and patch the gate with them. We just expect them to have the insurance cover and we don't, we don't tell them how to treat a tree. We don't tell them where you stand to do it because trees are all different shapes. But the, the, what they're wrong with is you, you may have a piece of land with a boundary where part of the tree goes over it. So without suggesting you can only touch areas, which is, it's ridiculous. So just call the job.
So, and would you prefer rather than healthy relationship, we had good working relationship?
Yes, much better. I know it's a term not with yet, but it's, it's staying within the realms of what we understand. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, now that we've changed the, uh, the tree policy, we happy with that to.
Sure. Would that like to propose it?
The last, the last bullet point on three, remove branches or trees to prevent access to squirrels or birds. Uh, as yet to see a tree that a squirrel cannot get up. They're very, very articulate. And they'll jump, they'll, you know, almost fly through the, through the air uh, to go from one tree to the other. So I don't quite know where that one's coming from.
That's the dead ones.
Can you prevent a bird? There's pigeons as big as turkeys going around Braddy Stoke at the moment. Have a look at a widow group, you'll see them on the roof.
Thanks, Keith. Andy, would you like to say something?
I.
Relating to squirrels, I think it was just if the trees are, for example, up the side of a building, it allows them access directly into the roof spaces, et cetera, and getting for cables and damage.
Oh, they've got the building anywhere if it's rendered or, uh, they even go up a pipe, like a rat will. Like a rat up a drainpipe. There you are, that's an old saying.
Uh, Tom, you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you, thank you councillors for their input, okay. One of the things I just want to point out, because Dell, I think, is in the meeting. It should be noted that town council does not carry out works on privately owned trees. So I think the other one, the word, wording which we already have, the town council will requi, uh, sorry, what is that? I don't know, regarding that insurance thing, you know, it's, it can be, we are only doing, looking after the properties trees in our own land, isn't it? In the work on town council own and maintained land.
Yeah, but Keith, yeah, but Keith was saying, um, uh, that to access, oh, whoever, sorry, whoever it was said it. Uh, it, uh, um, they would potentially have to get the permission to, for, uh, somebody else who wasn't our land to enable them to do the work on our land. So that's why it said max, okay.
I think I'm right in saying the law says that if you cut down a branch on a tree.
Gone again, Mike.
Um. Gone, uh, is it dead? That's my one, is it?
You can chop it off and throw it back, is that what you're saying, Michael?
Well, handed, that would be the word I would use.
Yeah, yeah.
He's offered to do so.
Um.
So. Hello.
Yeah, Tom, you want to say something?
Okay, I thought it would be better to hear from the person who crafted it. Um, Dell, that's one of the points which I, otherwise, you know, with that amendment, I'm very happy.
And, um, if you make a few comments, if you like.
Hi, um, yeah, that policy was amended by Sharon. I haven't actually got a copy in front of me. I know what the original, original one said. Uh, it was actually tailored for a completely different area with lots more trees and tree federation orders. And I can't actually remember any part about squirrels, so I'm really interested to find that part.
I wouldn't have added it in, I wouldn't have added anything in about prevent access to squirrels or birds because I'm a big favourite squirrel.
I think it's yes.
Last bullet point on three, Adele.
Well, I haven't, I haven't got a copy, but I'm going to get one.
Yeah, on the back, the last bullet point, remove branches of trees to prevent access to squirrels and birds. You might actually, you might actually constrict the wildlife and countryside acts on the birds as well.
I have a copy of the Armsbury Parish Council tree management policy here. And it does say remove branches or trees to prevent access to squirrels and birds.
I think you remove every tree in the area.
I've got a bit going, I don't know.
Okay, can we move, sorry, Dell, would you like to say something?
No, 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 fine.
Hey, can we move on then?
Can we have a agree that we've deleted that last?
Just take that line out.
Yeah.
Also, the section that Michael was saying about in common law, a property owner can cut back overhanging branches to the boundary of their property. The town council would usually have no objection to property owners carrying out pre-work or making a contractor. That's on four, but I think that's more or less what you were saying, Michael, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. Didn't he go through the branches back on the other person's property though?
Hand it back, yeah. You might throw it to a greenhouse.
That is Brian's policy, is it?
No, that's legal, that's a legal requirement. You can't, because otherwise you're stealing part of someone else's tree. You don't, you don't own the tree which overhangs your garden. It's just a nuisance to you and you're allowed to cut it.
Then you might shove it over their fence, might be through their greenhouse and cause a bad turn of the damage. I mean, we go to Armsbury and that policy on squirrels, it's.
Oh, and this is my mom, please.
Yes, please, do.
Um, uh, we'll vote your proposals.
Yeah, I'll propose it, go on.
Keith proposed, Mike seconded. There's a favor.
No, Michael's spoken good.
That's what it said.
Maybe, you said Mike.
Oh, oh dear.
Ryan? You can pay her. Yeah, I think so. You know, most one, thank you.
Right, marvelous. We've got a free policy. Um, process, um, thirteen point two two, adopting leave and pay guide, annual review. I think we could do all these together, I think. Maternity leave, pay guide, annual review, paternity leave, pay guide, annual review, and the shared parental leave and pay guide, annual review.
They haven't been reviewed by staff, boss, council, HR. They have a look at all of them, see whether any regulations have changed or.
I've just got one comment, uh, I've just got one, just, uh, one comment. I noticed that, uh, in these days of equality for maternity, a mother gets fifty-two weeks, which is a year, and the father gets two weeks.
But that's why there's the shared parental year one, because they can, they can share it between them, aren't they now?
Right.
You're not starting again, are you, Roger? What do for a fortnight off, eh? You've got a year off now.
Um, the, the other thing which I do seem to have is the actual terms and conditions of employment. But the, the next matter is.
So we just, I don't think we did a vote on that.
Uh, okay, yeah, do you want to vote on this, this particular one? Those various options, thirteen, two point one to two point five. Would you like to propose it?
Yeah, I'll propose it. Or, or I'll second Tom.
Tom.
Okay, Tom and Michael.
Thank you.
That's all right.
There's a favor.
There's a favor, yeah, good question. There's against. Uh, what one against is that? You still, you four against Mr. Bentley?
Three, four.
It's four, okay.
Thank you.
And no exceptions. Okay, move on. Review of the terms and conditions of employment.
Do you, do we, is this, would do in light of potentially, on potential information, because I don't know what this actually covers, do we need to, um, convoke standing order sixty-nine and go into closed session and stop? Lost.
We're going to begin by standing over silence.
Yeah.
Look, it's chatting about this, isn't it?
Yes, I said, um, can we have a proposal in the second then to go into closed session and to stop recording a meeting in light of potentially?